Chair this fun group, I have some introductory remarks. This open meeting of the Northborough Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with chapter two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty three relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Northborough Select Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The Act allows the Northborough Select Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream or the recording of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation in such unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment and this meeting is also being recorded. I will ask everyone to confirm that they can hear and be heard in the order on my screen. Laura Ziden.
Here.
Kristen Wixted.
Here.
Julian Hirsch.
Here.
Lisa Muselli.
Here.
Also here with us is interim Lieutenant Minister Mike Gallagher.
Here.
Excellent, so we will be going into executive session in a moment. We will resume open session at or after seven P M. I my assumption is it will be at seven P M, but not before. And folks who are watching will see a nice very exciting slide up informing them of that fact. And I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mister Chairman, I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one A three to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. S A Farm and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one A seven to review and consider the executive session meeting minutes of March twenty seventh, twenty twenty three, July seventeenth, twenty twenty three, July twenty sixth, twenty twenty three, July thirty first, twenty twenty three, September eleventh, twenty twenty three, October eleventh, twenty twenty three, due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding these matters in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board.
Second.
Motion's been made by Julianne and the discussion. Let's see all those in favor. Julianne?
I.
Kristen.
Hi.
Lisa.
Hi.
Laura.
Hi.
I also vote I vote as unanimous in favor, so we are going to executive session now where we will disappear from this Zoom meeting and this recording. And we will all see you again at seven o'clock. Thank you.
Hello, once again, one moment as everyone comes back in. For those at home, we have concluded our executive session and when everyone is back in, we will continue with the public session.
This chairman, I'm going to be a moment, I'll be back, I need to deal something that uh. Cancellation of my vacation, I'm supposed to be in Florida today.
Okay, that's understandable. All right, we won't do anything exciting without you, Mike. Di, was it you that sent me the email with the names of the people that would be participating? Was that Linda?
Ah, me.
You, okay. Of course, can't find it.
Do you want me to resend it?
No, I got it. Also, thank you. All right, we are all here. Mike is not here. And Mike is back. It was quick, Mike. Are you, are you all set? Ready to go? All right, is everyone ready to continue our meeting? Great, welcome back everyone into the open session of the North Bruce Select Board meeting of the 16th of October, 2023. Next up on our agenda is a public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to make a comment about anything, particularly something that's not on our agenda, raise your virtual hand and I will be more than happy to recognize you. Give it a few more seconds, I don't see any hands up. Going once. Going twice, public comment is closed. We have a set of meeting minutes of September 11th, 2023. Someone would like to make a motion to that effect?
I, yes, I would. I would like to move the board vote to approve the September 11th, 2023 meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Kristen, seconded by Julianne to approve the meeting minutes of September 11th as presented. Uh, the only discussion I will add is Linda, great job on the meeting minutes. Um, and anybody else have any comments? Julianne?
Yes, um, under my reports, it says noted that select board has scheduled an in-person goal setting meeting on up on August 28th that um. I said that at another meeting, so that just has to be erased.
Okay, maybe you were referring in the past to it. Um, but yeah, all right. Meaning that we held one um as opposed to had scheduled, so. Yeah, that's fine if we just want to strike that, that's all right.
I, I went back and looked and, and I, um, I, I must have said it at another meeting, so.
Okay.
Get rid of that.
Everyone's okay striking just that, that line? Okay, I will take that as a friendly amendment to the motion. Um. Any other comments or questions? Good, um, all those in favor, Kristen?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
I also vote I, vote is unanimous in favor, meeting minutes are approved with that one amendment. Um. Next up, we have, uh. I apologize if I butchered the name Gotham Chandru Vedic LLC DBA Peppers Indian Restaurant for consideration of an application for a common victual and entertainment license for premises located at 8110 Shops Way. I do see. for a common victual and entertainment license for premises located at eight one one zero Shops Way, I do see Gotham Chandru in here, so I'm going to bring you in as a panelist. And if you can unmute yourself when you get in and turn on your video if you can. I no longer see that, that person in either attendees. Panelists. They didn't get disconnected. We'll give it another moment or two and see. See if they return. There we go. Briefly there and then disconnected. Those thinking we could do this in person, we will be talking about going to the hybrid meetings later in this meeting. Is the technical capability of that? All right, what I'm gonna do is to, to give the owner the opportunity to be here. Unless anyone objects, I'm gonna move on to the next item and then come back to this, so. A late add to our agenda was Saint Bernadette's School to consider a one-day special liquor license for October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three for premises located at two six six Main Street. And we have Megan, Megan or Megan Kelleher. I will bring you in. And hopefully you won't be same fate as our prior panelist. Ah, okay, Gotham, I, I see your hand up now. We're gonna quickly deal with the Saint Bernadette's item and then we will come back to you, I promise.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, how are you?
I'm great, how are you doing tonight?
Very good, if you could identify yourself and let us know what you're interested in doing.
Sure, my name's Megan Kelleher and I'm the advancement director at Saint Bernadette's School. And before COVID, we used to have an annual tailgate party, it was just a social event for our families to come together and watch on the Patriots game and have, you know, fall arts and crafts and things of that nature and we normally apply for the special one-day license application to serve beer and wine. We have, we use Atlas distributor, we hire a tip certified bartender. And we have it only in the Charbonneau Center, so it's only in the gym, there is signage where it states that there is no alcohol allowed outside of the walls of the Charbonneau Center. And we gave everyone over twenty-one a bracelet, so they are easily identified. And it lasts from one to four just for the duration of the game. And that's about pretty simple.
Great, thank, thank you very much. Any questions from the board? We often have a police chief representative, a police representative at our meetings, please, I don't see anybody, Di or Mike, are you aware of anyone that should be here that I should ask and bring in?
No, they should not be here, but they are aware of the application and have no concerns.
Excellent, that's all we needed to hear from them, so that works for me. Hearing nothing else, this is not a public hearing, but so we don't need to close that, if there are no other comments or questions, I will entertain a motion and again, this is on the special one-day liquor license for Saint Bernadette's.
Mister Chair, I move the board to vote to approve the application for a one-day special liquor license as submitted by Saint Bernadette's School for October twenty-second twenty twenty-three for the premises located at two hundred and fifty-six Main Street.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Laura, seconded by Kristen, any other comments or questions? Let's see, all those in favor, Laura?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
I also vote I, vote is unanimous in favor, congratulations Megan and best of luck with the event.
Thank you, thank you so much for your time tonight.
Of course.
Thanks, have fun. Thanks.
Okay, and now we're gonna go back to the prior item. Gotham, I'm going to attempt to bring you in, hopefully with greater success than last time. All right, you're in the meeting, if you could unmute yourself and turn on your video if you can.
Hey, hey.
Hey, how are you?
Hey.
Good, all right, glad you were able to get in.
Yeah.
Thank you for patience with that, so, so my understanding is you are from here from Peppers Indian Restaurant, which is also operating under another name, why don't you actually identify yourself and tell us what's going on?
Sure, and I would like to, I'd like you to add Sunil Koli as well, he's in meeting, so.
Bring him in?
Yeah, you can bring him in, he's my partner, so. Yeah, so I'm Gotham Chandru, so I live in Northborough. And basically we are planning to, I mean, our LLC is Vedic LLC, but our DBA for the Vedic LLC is Peppers. Peppers Indian Cuisine. So, we would like to basically take this opportunity that we got in Northborough. I mean, we do have businesses and partnership interests in other estates and other locations, but we don't have like, like hands on in this particular town, so we live here and basically this is a great opportunity for us. And we would like to basically serve the community with our Indian food and Indian all the food related to Indian. So, basically that's, and we want to maintain all the quality and, I mean, the South Indian and North Indian, all the combined combination of both both, both the styles of Indian food. So. And we would like to take our, the premises that is right now being operated as Kumars. And we want to like continue the business in that location.
So this is a different business, but the same location as Kumars?
That's correct.
Gotcha, okay. That was the only question I had. Sunil, if you want to identify yourself just for the meeting minutes?
Sure, hi, I'm Sunil Koli, I'm, I've been a resident of Northborough for over ten years now. My kids go to the Saint Bernadette's School. We, we have been extremely happy with the community, we want to do, we have been looking for the restaurants to operate in the the Shrewsbury, Westborough, Northborough area and finally got an opportunity to set up something, do some something for the community, we are passionate about the food, we, like Gotham mentioned, we have the other restaurants too, we have very good experience in the business. And we are hoping that we can add a lot of value. Not just the Indian community, but all, we want to expose the Indian taste and the flavors to everybody else in the, in the area.
It's fantastic, I'm very excited that we have Northborough owners opening a Northborough restaurant. That's excellent, members of the board, any questions?
I can't wait to check it out, I'm really excited for, for, for all of you.
Yeah, he's happy to be our guest. And you can.
Julianne?
Are, are you gonna be changing the menu?
Yes, we are planning to change the menu a little bit and, yeah, so we are going to have some of the items are mostly common that we have in Kumars, but yeah, we are going to change the menu and we are going to bring in the North Indian style and some of the authentic special, specialties that we have in India to the menu and change the scope of it, yeah, definitely we're going to change the menu.
I think, I mean, so one of the things that we try to target, we want to create something that caters to the non-spicy lovers as well as the spicy, so we have the wide spectrum on the menu. We are trying to build.
Very good.
Thank you. From someone who eats a lot of mild Indian food, appreciate that.
I'm team spicy. For good, and when do you plan to open?
So we are ready to open, so there are a few cosmetic changes that we are planning to do. After that, basically, we are going to take our, and we are actually waiting for the blessing from the town.
Excellent, Lisa, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just, I look, I just wanna be sure, so you've taken, you've bought out the other company, you own, you own the restaurant, rent, rent, lease the space, I guess. And
We're going to lease this place, yeah.
So, the liquor license for that restaurant stays at that location and it becomes your liquor license once you buy it, correct?
We don't have liquor license for this. Yeah, for this restaurant, we don't have right now, probably in future, maybe we may to play for a freshman, but right now we are operating without liquor.
All right, great, great, that's right, I did. All right, thank you, I just wanted to clear that up. And I'm team not spicy.
We'll take it a few years.
Good, good.
Okay, there being no other questions, I will entertain a motion.
Okay, that's for my needing glasses to be put on. I move the board to approve the application for a common vitro's license. And an entertainment license as submitted by just went out on me again. By Vedic LLC, doing businesses peppers, Indian restaurant. For the premises located at eight one one zero Shops Way.
Motion made by Lisa, seconded by everybody, but I'll give it to Julianne, any other discussion? Lisa? Julianne?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
I also vote I, vote is unanimous in favor, I look forward to eating with you. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I guess that's where common vitriol comes in, right? If I read the words right.
Okay, next up, we have Cable Access Director Dana Volkey, request for ARPA funding for hybrid meeting project at Town Hall. Dana, I believe you're gonna be on Owen's slide there, there we go. Welcome.
Hey folks, good afternoon, good evening, hey.
Good evening.
Hey, yeah. All right, I'm usually behind the scenes, it's not obvious to me in front of the cameras.
Well, we're always happy to have you here and, and I think this is your first meeting with us on camera.
Yeah.
You joined the town, so congratulations on the new position, welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, glad to be back. I love working for the town of Northborough and I'm really happy to be back here, so.
Good, so what brings you here tonight?
Okay, so after the pandemic, there is some required technology that, that we need nowadays that we are on right now, which is Zoom. And hybrid technology stuff is in need. And that's kind of what ARPA funds are for, it's, it's for COVID relief, that sort of thing, economic growth past, post-pandemic, and I think this is a very worth using ARPA funds to, to invest in getting some hybrid AV technology over at Town Hall. So, if you don't mind, I'd like to share my screen real quick. And I have a small little PowerPoint real quick that.
Excuse me, can I just interrupt? Mister Chandru still here?
I, yes. I'm aware, he's, he looks very happy and very frozen, I have to both change his to, to an attendee as well as turn off his video, oh, there we go.
Yeah, I didn't realize he was frozen, I thought he was just hanging out, okay, thank you, sorry.
Okay. All right, let me share my screen real quick. All right, so. So, real quick. Right. So, just real quick, I'll make this rather short and sweet here, so. My the, my, our former director Kathy had just started this and I'm now sort of trying to get this complete here, so this is a little proposal for all of you on getting some hybrid AV technology over at Town Hall. This includes both the select board meeting room as well as conference room B on the, the lower level from that, so I tried to compress this into a smaller section here, so. You know, so it's a little, little bit easier to go through, so what I'm asking for is thirty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and I'm gonna break this down for you real quick, so what we're looking for in the main select board meeting room is a, I'd say smart board that'll be on a, on a wheel cart, so if you needed to move it to another room or another location, you can still do that. And with that, it has an integrated camera, kind of like a webcam or owl type of a system with a soundbar on top. And this is what you would use for your Zoom meetings. And with this, it has an integrated PC on there, so there'll be a wireless mouse keyboard, you control it just like any other Windows machine, so from there you can hop on in and go ahead and and use your, use your Zoom. And it's going to be integrated with our robotic camera setup that's already in the room over there at the select board meeting room. So we have three robotic cameras, we call those PTZ cameras for pantils in Zoom that are up there in the room as well as a switcher, so all those go into there, you switch between which camera is live at once, you can control it from there. And that's what broadcasts it live out to, you could go, you know, up on our channels, YouTube, Facebook, anywhere from there. It's all internet-based these days, no more, no more cables, things like that. So you're gonna have the smart board that you guys can use, what's cool about it, it's, it's a smart board, so you can write on this thing and use it for all kinds of different presentations. There's gonna be a little interface so you can plug in a laptop if you want to use that for presentations. We are, I also quoted in there, Apple TV, so if you guys have an Apple device you swatch, switch right over in there and mirror that on that as well. There's also gonna be a monitor on the other side of the room. So if people can't see the smart board, it mirrors over onto this other monitor. So that way, everybody can, can see what's going on. And again, it's all gonna be integrated with, with what we have there with our camera setup, so the people on Zoom can hear what's going on in the room and vice versa, so there's gonna be a speaker involved, so. What's in the room can be amplified in the room as well, as well as that being heard over the people on Zoom, the people on Zoom can be heard. So. So that's, it's, it's nothing terribly complicated, and at the same time, what's going on on Zoom will go back to us as a video source, so it comes out nice and crisp and professional, same thing with the presentation, so if you use that for PowerPoint presentations and things like that, it goes right back to us. Nice, crisp and clear, whereas right now, we're using a projector that projects onto the wall and we point a camera at the wall, you know, it doesn't look too great, so it's a little really nice, all the, all this stuff, the the audio, the video, everything's gonna be very crisp, clean, professional, it's gonna be very, very nice. And alternatively, at the same time, in the conference room B on the, on the floor underneath very similar system except without the integration of our robotic camera, so you're gonna have the same smart board that's up on wheels, so you can cart that around, move that anywhere you need to. That's gonna have a PC built in and you can do hybrid meetings using that as well, so the thing too is also with the select board meeting room. You can have it integrated with us at NCT or if you needed to have a meeting that didn't go out live or something with staff training or anything like that, that you need to report to do a meeting with, you can do all that independently without us as well, if, if need be, so. The way that I broken this down is it's, it's twenty-four five eighty-eight for the select board meeting room. It's sixty-one ninety for conference room B and I did add just ten percent just because technology, the prices of technology adjust quite often. technology, the prices of technology adjust quite often. So you know, we had gotten some feedback on the original quote, did did a couple of small alterations and a few bits of the technology did either increase or decrease. So this will just help us out a little bit with any leeway in the event that any of that increases by any chance. So. The vendor that I'm using for this is Aukers. They're great. I've used them pretty much my entire career. They've been around forever. They're Massachusetts MHC trusted vendor. They've, you know, been all over, pretty much like the state and all over the, they have similar systems over in several other neighboring towns. And they've been very good to accommodate with. So yeah, so that's that's what I'm looking for right now. And at the same time, you know, we've had some talks about potentially moving some stuff in the room or I'm very well aware that we may either down the road be renovating Town Hall or moving to another building in the center of town. So with that, this setup, we're not going to be wiring stuff well inside the walls. It's all going to be with tracers and like the rectangular then traces you can put the wires in. It'll just be up against the walls, U G adhesive. So anything that we put in there could relatively be modular. So if you needed to, let's just say we ended up moving to another building or whatever we end up doing. It's not going to be a huge hassle to take things down and move it and reinstall. So. So there you have it. There you have it. So anybody have any questions?
Lisa?
Sure.
Everybody has questions. Good. Lisa first.
Waiting and waiting and waiting is I'm sure many of our people out there has too, who are looking forward to this. Um, I was wondering if, and I'm glad to hear that it is movable because.
Oh, yeah. Sure.
Um, I know that the senior center also has a whole mic setup and everything else down there. Can this also be you? I mean, I don't know why that was all set up down there like that. I'm assuming that you could have had had previous meetings down there in the past, before your time, before my time. But that they're they're in very good condition. Could this? What would putting something in there or could something say from conference room B be brought there if there was something that we decided we wanted to have a meeting there?
Could that? Yes, absolutely. So to answer your question, I believe you are referring to the brand new robotic cameras that we had put in that are about a year and a halfish, somewhere around there ago, that we worked with the senior center to put brand new cameras in there, a new projector and everything. Yeah, beautiful, beautiful installation. Which we will be definitely be utilizing. And yes, any of this stuff can be brought over there if need be. But real quick, I have been working with Kendra over at the senior center. She got in touch with me. We had a meeting, real quick, sidetrack. She applied for a grant to get hybrid meeting technology. It just for senior centers. And so I said, hey, I'm working with Aukers. They're giving us this smart board with the camera and in the soundboard and everything. Why don't I hook you up with them? They can give you a quote on the similar stuff. So what also would be great about this is I'm very much into having technology symmetry where we have the same technology in every building. So whatever we have for technology at the town at Town Hall, I would also like to have at the senior center. So for instance, like the video switcher that we use, all the cameras go into this and you can switch between what cameras is kind of thing, you know, you see like in a a control room in a in a TV studio or at the news affiliate. It's one brand that we have. So anytime I do any kind of an installation anywhere, I want to say, I want to have this exact same one. Usually the same type of cameras. So that way, myself, any of our staff, IT, anybody, we all know the same stuff, no matter where we're going to be. So that's my, that's why I really wanted everything to be kind of the same. So this makes things easier for us as staff, big time.
That sounds great. I mean, that's exciting.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Big time. Yep.
And I'll throw in there that the library is also looking to do something somewhat similar. And I imagine Dana, you're talking to Jen.
I had a meeting with Jen last week. Yes, yes, we had a we had a really good chat, moving things along. So things are going good.
Great. Let's see, Julianne and Laura, you both had your hands up. I'll, let's say, I think I saw Julianne first.
Okay, so thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Owen, for doing all of this work. I just have one quick question, and that is for people who, for residents who are participating remotely. Will will it be pretty much the same as we've all gotten used to or?
Exact same thing. Yep, exact same thing. Yep, hundred percent.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we'd be able to support audience remotely but fully participating as well as member remote if somebody is out of town or not feeling well and they don't want to share our germs, et cetera.
Exactly. Yep, hundred percent.
Thanks.
Great. Julianne, Laura?
I'm welcome back, Dean. I'm so happy to see this and I'm really looking forward to this because I know that this has come up for a while, you know, for ARPA and everybody's really excited to have the ability to do hybrid meetings. So that is awesome. I appreciate all the thought that you've put into this awesome proposal. And I love the other towns as well. Just my only other question is that are there any like renewal costs or is there software that's affiliated with this that we'll need to budget for in the future? Or is this just like a one time just for the equipment?
One time expense for now. The only thing that I could think of is. You know, down the road, not so much on this, but things like the video switcher or some other things that as technology gets on, you know, I mean, we're talking like usually when it comes to technology, it's right around like the decade long kind of thing. So our cameras, things like that, usually, you know, ten plus-ish years. You should give or take. I just before, you know, I was here, left to go do IT and I kind of came back and in the IT world, I kind of figured out that, yeah, usually ten years max on a lot of the stuff is usually where you're at. You know, you don't necessarily have to get rid of everything, but it it kind of depends on what it is. It depends on warranty, all that kind of stuff. So. But for what we're looking at right now, it's definitely more about, it's like a one time thing.
It looks good. I can't wait to see it in action.
I'm sorry?
My other question, how quickly can we get it implemented? Like, if we approve it now, can it start tomorrow?
I I asked my installer and my 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 rec, my rep at Aukers, I said, hey, let's just say hypothetically, we got the green light today and how long are we talking about? So on average, whenever we start a project with them, we sign all the paperwork, everything's good to go. They have some projects that they're already working on. And then they have to order everything, get all the parts in, and then they come in. We're looking at about a three months out wait until they can come in and do the installation. So about, yeah, that's kind of what we're.
Awesome. I really appreciate this. That's all my questions for now.
All right, great.
Great. Thanks, Laura. Couple of things, real. One thing I'm very happy about is when the board began to have conversations about getting some hybrid technology. It was around a year and a half ago when I joined the board, may have been before that. Numbers being floated around at that point were in excess of a hundred thousand dollars just for the select board meeting room. So we've got it down to twenty five percent of that and I. I I the hundred thousand seemed really high to me, but getting repeated, so I didn't know. And I appreciate you being able to find what looks to be a really good solution for a lot less than that. As well as having the fourth out to include meeting room B, which is an actively used meeting room, which has no equipment right now. So so they would really be brought up a couple of levels there. So I think that's great. We had talked a little bit about the meeting room rearrangement and I just wanted to get an informal consensus from the board that we're supportive of that. And that's, you know, works in line with what you're doing. So for folks at home, as you walk in right now to the meet, the select or meeting room, there's a long table. That all the members sit at and then the audience faces that that long straight table. A huge disadvantage of that, if you are sitting at that table, you can't see everybody else. And that makes it really hard to have a productive meeting. The few in-person meetings that I've had since joining the board have been have been challenging there because I, you know, we all want to want to see each other and understand the body language, which is one of the benefits of meeting in person. So it turned out that that Kathley, Dan's predecessor, had already done some work and done some design work. So something was sent out to the board earlier that shows basically if you walk in, there would be a U shaped table on the right side of the room as you walk in. So the the same desks that we have now, but just rearranged, so it wouldn't be buying new furniture. And then the audience would shift over to the left two thirds or so of that room. And I spoke with Dana in advance of this meeting a little bit, and as you said that you'd be able to accommodate that fine. But you would need to know now before you went to install this new stuff. Because where the wall mounted TV would go would change and where some of the wiring might change and you might need to move one of the cameras around or something like that. So I wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, just just to add on top of that, yeah, it's not a huge deal if we if you guys did commit to that. It would just mean that probably two of the cameras that are already installed on the walls just have to move them a little bit, not a huge deal. And again, too, that ten percent that's built into that into this price may have to do with. Let's just say I need a slightly longer ethernet cable or anything like that. That just might be slightly more expensive. You know what I mean? Just just in terms of the length of the cable for moving one thing from one end of the room to the other from what we've already specked out. So that's pretty much it. So yeah, it's it's, of course, I'm happy to help you guys go in there and and do the dirty work to help. You know, move the chairs and the desks and all that and get things squared away. If you guys decided that's what that's what you guys want to do and I'll work with my vendor to make sure that everything gets accommodated.
Okay, so our members of the board are okay with the room rearrangement, assuming we we approve this tonight to for that to happen at around the same time?
Yes.
Okay. Seeing a lot of nodding, so that's good. We don't need to vote on that. That's furniture. And the other piece is one of the great advantages, not well, for our board is the people that come in for liquor licenses and common vic licenses and thing and as well as staff members. Is they can do it remotely, which we would really, you know, certainly allow and encourage to continue to happen for in-person meetings. Because sometimes those consultants, not just for us, but even more so for the planning board and zoning board and conservation commission are all over the place. And some of them are representing the clients who are in front of those boards. And they may be elsewhere in the country or elsewhere in the world at the time. Is that an advantage of the Zoom meetings is I've got a TV, you know, or a monitor, you know, a foot and a half from my eyes right now. And so I can see the plans that get brought up there. And that's a lot easier than having big B sized drawings sort of shifting around on the table, which is the way things used to be done. I'm a little concerned about how a hybrid meeting might work with that scenario where everyone's just watching a TV that is that might be ten or fifteen feet away from them. So I want to give those boards that opt to come back in and have those hybrid meetings a little space to sort of figure that out. And there may be an advantage of getting a couple of extra small monitors to go on the desks or iPads or Chromebooks and some of them, some people, of course, have those that they could bring in for those meetings. I'm not suggesting we we buy anything else, but to see how that happens as as I've been thinking through this and speaking with members of some of those other boards. They that they have needs that are a little bit different than our board as far as being able to see detailed drawings on a very regular basis. So that's something will work out, but I think this is a fantastic, more than just first step. Really a big, big, big step into the hybrid meeting technology and the ability for us to to see each other in person a little bit more often. Laura?
One more quick question. If this ends up coming in in a perfect world for less than what we're approving today, will that money just go back to ARPA? Or how does that like, because I know there's specific requirements for how that's spent. So what would happen to that?
So money not spent, as long as it is not spent before next December, the end of next December of twenty twenty four would be available for reallocation.
I apologize, but I wasn't talking about the like all thirty three thousand, but just for the ten percent adjustment, if it comes in at less than that ten percent.
Yeah, whatever it is, anything, anything unexpended.
Okay.
Would be avail would be available for a similar purpose through the duration of the ARPA timeline, which is the end of twenty twenty six, or could then be reallocated by the select board for any other ARPA purpose prior to anytime prior to December thirty first of twenty twenty four.
Got it.
But from the from the sounds of it, it sounds like this project will be complete long before then. Lisa?
You're on mute.
You're muted, Lisa. You get your your one strike.
Thanks. The sneeze I tried to save you from didn't happen.
Bless you.
So being a photographer and videographer myself, not only are cameras important, but lighting is important. So what have we done about that? How are these? How is that room set up for lighting? Of course, you're changing it around a little bit, so I would think it would be a little bit better because if anything else, the side lighting would be happening from the window if we ever meet during the day. Have you done adjustments for lighting in there or is it always just the the ambient light that's there?
We are at the mercy of the ambient light that is in that room. Right now, yeah, we have those drapes over those tall windows. We have the lights that are up there. But I mean, if you've watched any of our most recent meetings that have those modern cameras in there, everything looks pretty darn good. So it's not not really anything I'm concerned about.
Okay.
And if we needed to, in theory, we could put additional lighting in there, but I I tend to think as Dana does that we'll be okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to approve the use of ARPA funds in the amount of thirty three thousand eight hundred sixty five dollars for the Town Hall Hybrid Meeting Project. And for expenditure of such sum by the Cable Access Director pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty four, Section fifty three A.
Second.
Hey, motion made by Julianne, seconded by Kristen. Any other discussion? All those in favor, Julianne?
I.
Kristen?
I.
Lisa?
I.
Laura?
I.
I also vote I vote as unanimous in favor. Dana, congratulations. Thank you very, very much. We're certainly looking forward to to getting this in there. And I'm sure you'll be working with with Mike on the procurement aspect of it as our chief procurement officer for the town, but you know that.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I really appreciate all your your help and support on this.
Thank you.
For this for a long time, so.
Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you.
All right, I will stop sharing my screen now. You know, oh, there we go. Okay, thank you, everybody. Have a good rest of the night.
Behind the scenes.
Back to behind the scenes. All right. Thanks, folks. Take care.
Bye.
Okay. Next up, we have Fire Chief David Parenti for consideration of request to implement a new permit fee for battery storage units. Chief Parenti, I am more than happy to bring you in, of course.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Chief.
Wonderful. Great to see you.
Good. All right, tell us why you're here.
Because the Commonwealth has decided we need a new permit. So there's a a new process going on. It's related to photovoltaic cells on a roof. It's called an energy store. Or an ESS is how we. But an ESS is just a big bank of lithium ion batteries. These batteries are, some people, we've sometimes seen referred to as a generator. They're not actually a generator. The idea is you can use the energy that you generate during the day at night, or when it's a crappy day, you have the power. The state has decided to put the fire department in charge of and now have to. The ESS, whether it's potential, review that permit, submission, review the plans, conduct inspections on site, all this other stuff. Do that, I need the board to approve a new fee permit. Getting is a hundred dollars based on the required to re the permit submission to the look at all the plans and then do all the one, two, maybe sometimes three inspection.
Chief, your your microphone was breaking up a little bit. I think I understood everything that you said. Do any members of the board need the chief to repeat anything? Julianne, you know, I think I see a few hands.
It's it's not that you were breaking up. It's that I don't, I don't quite under. Can you give us an example of?
Yeah. So if if you were to, we we actually have several of these in town already. They've been installed and we've worked with Bob Federico. Bob and I have gone to tons of classes and so has some other of our employees to figure out exactly how this licensing only work. Imagine you have photovoltaic cells, you know, for solar panels on the roof. Uh, photovoltaic cells, you know, uh, for solar panels on the roof. And it's a cloudy day or it's at night. You're not generating electricity. During the day, you're generating electricity, but more electricity than you need. So you take that extra electricity and you store it in a in. There is a lithium ion batteries, the same type of batteries you have in your. Cell phone or in your electric bikes, only bigger and put together in series. So they store in there that at night and on. Snow snowy days or whatever, you have that power to draw off of. You basically can live off the grid. These installations are both uh. Can provide can present a higher hazard and can present a hazard. Uh, hazard. We, as the fire department, have been tasked with reviewing. The plans where these are being installed, how they're installed, the signage that goes with them. Uh, are they the proper size? Are they are they too big? All that stuff. Review all that. Before they can begin the.
Thank you. That that.
Does that help?
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
So my understanding Tesla Powerwall is probably the most widely known.
Tesla is the most, and that's the one we've dealt with a lot to share, but there's other ones out there. Um, we've uh, I tell you, it's it's the. What happened with with it is the technology moved ahead faster than the state can move ahead with. Oh, suddenly it was there and going in and we didn't have a process to permit and properly to inspect it properly. To say where they can be installed. A lot of people want to put these in their basements of their houses. Very dangerous to put in the basement of the house, because once they catch on fire, once they start overheating, we can't put them out. Right? They 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 just uh they they run away and you've heard this the horror stories of. Uh, the electric cars that have to be. Take thirty, forty, fifty, sixty thousand gallons of water. Well, this is the same type. So that's why we have gotten involved where the as where they can install. They go on an outside wall, they go in a garage. We don't. Basement, a lot of different things.
Lisa.
Um, this is a question on that. After the installation, do they get yearly inspections or how do you uh? What happens with that? Because once it's on there, is it usually on the roof? It'd be kind of hard, but. Um, if something were to start to malfunction, would you only know that after a fire started?
Yeah, so the 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 photovoltaic on the roof itself. The different permit, that's a different. Actually, we're actually doing the batteries. The battery system, the storage system. Uh, and your question is. Is a fairly valid one, because what happens is when you start to overheat, when they hit two hundred and fifty degrees. They start to off gas carbon monoxide before they burn. So that's another reason why we're involved in this permitting, so we can say you need, we need to make sure that you have the required carbon monoxide detectors. Where they're supposed to be. Um, we need to make sure that the uh the walls are proper, that the doors are proper, that it's not going to, it's not going to easily. Then answer to your question, Lisa. Once they're installed, we there is not a follow-up inspection, no different than. Once an uh a furnace is installed in your house, we do a, we do the initial inspection, but we don't come back out. Once your LP tanks are installed in your house, there's no follow-up. There are follow-ups with commercial mainly because of the size and. And the uh, the power that's being stored and generated, but there's no follow-up.
Okay, do it. Continue with that. I mean, that's kind of an interesting thing. I mean, the detector that they have or that you're talking about for. Does it also go to the fire station or is it just like just in the home that's?
No, so so for for residential homes, it's no different than your smoke detector. It is tied into your system, though, so. Let's say if you were in bed at night. And you started having a problem with uh your storage and your and your carbon monoxide went off. It would trigger all of your detectors. That's why we require them to be hardwired interconnected. So if you're in bed, you want in your upstairs, it'll it'll actually announce it's a carbon monoxide. You'll know what it is. It will do it, but you'll have to then notify the fire department unless you have a. Fire alarm system that is tied in through uh several of the various vendors out there that provide that. Most uh in Northborough not have that. Oklahoma.
Okay, and then that leads me to asking then about two families and multifamilies. Um, and the reason I say this is my daughter actually lived in a condo with four units. And her.
Yeah, so so the number of units is what. Drives whether or not a local system is needed. A fire alarm system that's tied into a central monitoring service, which is a one that we didn't call off, right? So for your duplex, it's not needed. For a three unit, it's not needed. Or a four unit or or greater, normally we consult with the. Building official. They're the ones that actually make that determination and say, okay. Yes, it will be needed or maybe no, it won't, because it's active once they install, but not all, not all buildings are having these put in. They're not inexpensive. Um, they're they're fairly expensive to put in and 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 uh so we're not seeing them everywhere, but. It is as part of the initial install that is. Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the board? Um, I was curious in looking at that that table to see how large of a battery that is, particularly the. Um, the twenty kilowatt hour lithium ion. Um, a typical laptop battery. Um, has to be under a hundred watts. So this would be, in theory, two hundred laptop batteries um all wired together would.
Correct, yeah. It it the the systems are are fairly substantial. As I said, if if you were to drive around town, we have uh, there's one on School Street, there's one um. Uh, right on Southwest Cut Off. There's there's several of them, but I'm thinking of the ones I've recently reviewed. So those are the ones that are popping in. Right. And if you were to drive around the rear of the building, you would actually see. The battery storage systems on the exterior of the building. With all the signage of how to shut them down and all that, because you see the systems are all different. And there's a lot of uh. Requirements that the state has put in place that. Shut the systems down automatically when there's issue.
Right. So my understanding is, under state law now, you have to. Get a permit and you have to issue the permit. What you're requesting is a fee to help cover the cost essentially.
That is correct. I I the uh creating the permit is within my purview as the fire chief. Issuing a permit is within my purview, but. Based on discussion with uh with Diane and Michael, we determined that it is the board's responsibility to set that fee. What that fee will be, so that's why we're here to.
Great. And you think a hundred dollars is the appropriate amount?
I think it's a yes. And and again, I I had some some talks with Michael and 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 died to make sure that we were. Again, I I've never felt that the. The permitting process within the fire department is a money-making deal. That's not what the purpose of this. To help cover our some of the cost of our personnel hours. And these are fairly expensive reviews that need to be done. So is this going to cover a hundred percent of it? No. That's not the intent. The intent is to help off.
Great. Uh, Julian, I think I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I was gonna ask the same question you did about the fee.
Okay. Great. Any other comments or questions from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Chair, I moved the board vote to add a one hundred dollar fee to the existing fire department fee schedule. For the issuance of permits to install and operate energy storage systems at any property within the town.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Kristen, seconded by Laura. Any other discussion? All those in favor, Kristen?
Hi.
Laura?
Hi.
Julian?
I.
Lisa?
I.
I also vote I vote as unanimous in favor. You're all set, chief. Anything else for us tonight?
Not tonight. Thank you all very much.
Very good.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you all too. Bye bye.
Thank you.
Bye bye. All right, uh, next up, we have. Uh, Amy Peretzky, consideration of request for ARPA funding for the. Town Common Tree Illumination Project and Installation of an Irrigation System. Amy's here on behalf of the. Um, outside the Town Town Common Committee. Amy, I do see you. I'm going to bring you in. Meet yourself and turn on your camera if you so desire.
Sure. Hi, how are you? Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Panelist, and I'm kind of nervous, which is weird, being on all these boards. So um. My name is Amy Peretzky and I'm co-chair of the Town Common Committee. Uh, myself along with a group of dedicated Northborough ladies, started the committee back in two thousand and fourteen. With the purpose of downtown beautification. Um, this included applying to Community Preservation Committee. For funding to construct a town common on the parcels located at thirty nine and forty five West Main Street. Um, the stars aligned and with the help of CPA funding. An award from a straight estate grant for two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. A dono- a donation of land from the Maroni family. Support from staff and support and donations from the residents. The town common was constructed. Um, in two thousand and nineteen, we ran a brick drive. And the money that we received from the brick drive went towards some of the benches. And also lighting of six street trees last year. So tonight I'm asking for ARPA money to finish the rest of the trees. There are a couple of trees. In the front that weren't lit and we get a lot of questions like, why aren't those two trees lit? Plus, the big tree in the middle. Um, would look great illuminated. So tonight I'm asking for um nineteen thousand two hundred and ninety two dollars and ninety six cents. Three thousand two hundred sixty three and forty six cents. Will be used to finish the tree illumination. And the other sixteen thousand. Twenty nine and fifty cents is for an irrigation system. Which will um help keep the lawns beautiful year round. Um, Scott Chapantier and the DPW was in support of this. They wrote a email.
Received, yeah, we we all received Scott's email. Um, prior to the meeting, I don't think it made it into the packet. Uh, but just public, so we we did get that in writing from Scott.
Okay. And and I'm assuming if awarded tonight, the money would actually be transferred into the DPW budget or whatever way Scott does it, because. He would be the one overseeing it. Just like all the other town common committee projects. So the money would come from ARPA, go into his budget or however he accepts it and he would pay. And he would oversee both the irrigation and the lighting.
Mechanically, I'm not sure how how that is done, but I'm sure it can be done just about any way that's necessary.
Right, probably have like Dana um requesting the money to go into probably their budget or however he gets it. Be the same thing going to Scott. Uh, it's not going to come to the town common committee.
Great. Okay, so this is ultimately an expense from the DPW that um that will be funding.
Yep.
Excellent. Good. Good to have that clarification. Um. Any questions?
Sorry.
Questions or comments from the board? Laura?
I love the town common and thanks for just reviewing the history of it and all the work that went into that, you know, for the town. It's one of my favorite. Places to visit downtown and I love that this is going to hopefully offset some of the work for, you know, just making sure that the grounds remain as beautiful as they are. I think the lighting's going to look gorgeous, so. I appreciate all that you did and. And I look forward to going back.
No, thank you.
Uh, I I see Kristen, then Lisa.
Hi, Amy. Thanks for for um all your your work on this and the and the rest of the town common committee. So. You said some of the trees are lit and so this is to finish lighting the ones that aren't lit.
Right.
So I just want to double check that, because I guess I don't uh. When I drive through there at night, which I probably haven't done in a while, because it's been late, late till recently. Um, I don't pay attention, so I will pay attention, but um, so it's like spotlight lighting them, right?
Yep. Okay, great. It's, yeah, it's uplit because the trees were so small, they thought if we hung. Lights on them, that would break the branches.
Yeah.
So the idea last year was to uplift them and there are about six trees right now that are lit up. We um, it came out of the town. Town Common Committee money last year for forty five hundred dollars for the six.
Okay.
But we planned on lighting the rest, so.
And um, I might have missed this. You might have said that, but. So Scott helped you with the pricing? Does he have a vendor in mind or are they going to do it themselves?
They'll do it. I have some quotes already from um the Varon Company.
Oh, okay.
Yep, they do a lot of lighting. He said he's done some lights in Epcot and also down in Roger Williams.
Okay, all right. Great. Okay, thank you.
Lisa.
Um, again, thank you and thank the committee that worked really hard to get this to happen. I think they should. They should have their little names put in lights.
Thank you.
Please light up, but uh. Yeah, the other question, I I think I was talking about the the big center tree. Is that going to be another thing or is that included? Like the big.
Included.
Is included, so.
Yep.
About some of the some of the options you might have for that. So I think it's, I I think it's great. I think it's a wonderful uh completion to a fabulous job and I think uh, I think everybody in town gets to enjoy it when they. Get there and uh sit sit down and listen to concert or go to a farmer's market. So again, thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you. Laura, I'm sorry.
First time here, it's all right.
How quickly is this going to be able to be completed before winter?
Yep, definitely. He he's ready to go. He wants to definitely do it before the ground freezes. All the flags are up there now. People drive by to do the quote. He actually put the flags up, so the green flags. Are where the sprinklers are going to go and there are some white flags where the trees are.
Great. Julian?
Yeah, Amy, um. Thank you to you and your committee for all that you've done to get us here and all those years of work. Um. So I don't know if this is the right place to bring it up, but um, are there any plans to to prune? The the maples that are along the sidewalk. I I'm a little confused because selectmen are supposed to be. We're sup- we're supposed to be responsible for sh- public shade trees. And. You know, it's important to have these trees pruned periodically so that they grow nicely, right? And um. Do you, do you have any? Do you have plans or do we have plans? Does anybody? Does anybody know?
Scott's not here tonight, but I think that'd be a great question for Scott. I could even forward it when I I'm going to write back to him and and let him know how it goes, but I could ask him.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think ma- maintenance would be under uh the DPW, so that makes sense as a question for Scott. That's a good one.
Thanks.
Okay, Mike just pointed himself, I think.
Yeah, well, I'll speak to Scott in the morning, ask him to do with him about something else as well.
Fantastic. That's great. Thank you. Uh, I don't see any hands up from the board. We do have a hand up from the, two hands up from the audience. Uh, let's see, uh, two people we know well. Uh, first, Scott Rogers. Uh, if you could unmute yourself, identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind.
Hi, good evening. Scott Rogers at twenty six Tomahawk Drive. Just a question for clarity. There's a proposal printed on August ninth for the irrigation. And then a second proposal printed on September twenty fifth. For the same irrigation materials minus the outside labor. Is that an updated proposal? And so we should be talking about a different amount, uh, amount of only sixty seven or sixty eight hundred dollars for the irrigation. It seems like in the request, you've added these two items together. I don't know if that is appropriate or not.
Um, no, there were two proposals. I think the first one. They started Scott and Dave Varan and then they decided they needed more. So he had a part one and a part two, but I verified that with him. And it's definitely adding them all together. He added more sprinklers.
So there's going to be a total of seventy two heads instead of thirty six heads?
Yes. Sixteen thousand twenty nine was for the um irrigation.
And you're sure of that, that it's thirty six plus thirty six?
Hundred percent.
He only estimated fifty percent of the project when you first quoted it?
I I questioned Scott on that. Scott worked with Dave Varan on it and um. And they came up with the numbers of the sprinklers. I really didn't have a lot to do with the sprinklers. I was more the lighting. And um, they worked together on it and um Scott forwarded me the. Quotes and I questioned if it was one or two and he said it was both. There was a phase one, phase two. But they're going to do it all at once.
The the board might want to add, you know, uh, and a condition of their approval on a some clarity on exactly what's being ordered. That would be a suggestion. Thank you for answering the question.
Sure.
I don't think we need to do that in the motion, but Mike is paying attention and I think Mike will clarify that with Scott, um, you know, before the uh, the order is issued.
Um, Chairman, through you on being your chief procurement officer, all of these purchases have to go through me at some level, so I'll make sure that it is done correctly.
Great, thank you. All right, and uh, next up, another familiar name, Jason Pro.
Wow.
Jason, if you could identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind.
You, Mister Chair, Jason Pro, twenty seven Treetop Circle. Um, I was going to raise the same uh uh concern that Scott Rogers raised um as one question. The second question. The second question I have is is more general, uh, what is? The opportunity or the expectation of members of the public to be able to submit ARPA requests? Going back sixteen months, we had a public input session. And roughly one year ago, we had just a very brief. Uh, you know, one line summary for each of the projects that had been submitted at that point. And to my knowledge, apart from a few of the particular projects that were on that list, there are many others that. Haven't undergone any kind of evaluation or disposition. And now we're having other projects that weren't on that list originally being brought forward uh for consideration, so. Uh, so I would like to understand what the board's position is as far as. Opportunity for members of the public um to continue to submit ARPA requests to the board. Thank you.
Sure, good question, Jason. Um, the board has never closed submissions. For ARPA requests, I I think we're always interested in whatever the the good ideas are. Thank you.
And I just want to state, although I'm a resident and I'm on the town common committee. Um, the town common is really for the good and the benefit of the whole town. I'm not really asking for funds for. Like a private pet project. I don't know if that, you know.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is a town property and and these are items that I know were were identified pretty early on with the project. We weren't able to do it. Um, as part of the initial construction. I know the town common committee had uh, had collected a lot of donations and you expanded all of those donations to get the first. Uh, the first group of lighting that were put in there and and some other things, so we had to find another source of revenue to pay for the additional lighting and um. This makes sense. From my perspective at least. Lisa?
And I also noticed being there the last time that we went to the parade that much, many of the areas of grass had just been. Uh, burned up because I didn't get any irrigation. So I think it's part of keeping the the area beautiful, especially around the monuments and such.
Yes, I think this fall they had to replace all the sod around the. In the area of the monuments, you're right.
And one question, and I know that no one from the DPW is here, so I don't expect to get an answer. Um, if somebody is walking around the town common and the sprinklers are about to go on, whether there's some way of. Warning the person that they're about to get wet. Um. I don't know whether that can be part of the system or not.
Yeah, that I'm sure they're gonna be on timers and usually like on properties that people own that, like commercial properties, they go up early in the morning. So I'm sure Mike could even bring it up tomorrow with Scott, but I'm assuming that the sprinklers will be really early in the morning.
Makes sense. Christian?
One, one little point on that, um. Uh, sometimes they're in the evening in the summertime. Um, and it it might make sense to try and make sure they're. They're not at like seven or even eight at night in the summertime because it's still like that and people might still be there, so more like, you know, at dark in the summertime. And if you're at the common after dark in the summertime, it's your. You know, you might get wet.
Or you'll be in trouble. I heard it's only to sunset, sundown to sunset. You you're not supposed to actually be there. It was very specific when we went through the lighting with Scott. He didn't want it so illuminated that it welcomed people at. Night, like we weren't allowed to light up the pergola. We originally wanted to do that. And he said that all parks close after sunset. So he didn't want that happening. So yeah, maybe they'll do the sprinklers after sunset. So if you're there, you're gonna get caught.
I wonder, I know there's a, there's a process in place where if an organization wants to use the town common for something, they have to. Um, request something from uh, from the administrative offices. I wonder if that can just sort of be linked to notify, probably already is to notify the DPW and then they could, if if the timing conflicted with when the sprinklers would be run. They would uh, turn it, turn it off for that time of that event. That's a little detail.
It would be a great detail for them to know though, because they have had that night play and it would be, imagine everybody sitting on the lawn and the sprinklers go off.
Yes. That's right, that was, that was pretty neat. Um, alright, uh, Jason Pro, you have raised your hand again. I'll bring you again and again. You don't need to identify yourself. We remember you. What's on your mind?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, uh, maybe I wasn't clear in my original inquiry, but uh, I guess I'm going to ask, is it fair to say that? Many of the projects originally proposed from the public input session a year and a half ago. Essentially are discarded. They aren't going to receive any further consideration by the board unless somebody. Re submits them uh with timelier information.
I, at least for myself, I can only speak for myself. I wouldn't reach that conclusion, no.
Was there a timeframe where the board would expect to evaluate those and make some decisions about them?
I mean, we have until the end of calendar twenty twenty-four to make those decisions, but I I certainly anticipate we'll be reviewing those nearer than that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Julian?
Well, to Jason's point, I I keep bringing this up, but I think it's really important that um. You you know, before we spend huge amounts of money, we get that building assessment report. Because that will, that will reveal some potentially expensive items that. You know, could help with with taxes and whatnot, so um. For me personally, I'm not speaking for the board, but for me personally, getting that information sooner rather than later is gonna be critical and moving forward with ARPA decisions.
Thank you. Um, Mike, perhaps you need the lengthening list of things you talked to Scott about tomorrow? If you could uh inquire as to the status of that. I don't, I don't remember what the expectation was for timeline when we approved it a few months back. Great, thank you. Any other comments or questions uh for Amy on the irrigation and lighting for town common? Alright, so we have two potential votes for us tonight. Uh, the first one would be on the uh, on the lighting. Or tree illumination. Someone like to make a motion?
I would. I would like to move the board. Vote to approve the use of ARPA funds in the amount of three thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-six cents. For the completion of the town common tree illumination project as requested by the town common committee. And for the expenditure of such sum by the DPW director pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A.
Second.
Motion made by Lisa, seconded by Julianne. Any other discussion or comments? Um, all those in favor. Lisa?
Hi.
Julianne?
Hi.
Kristen?
Hi.
Laura?
Hi.
I also vote, I vote as unanimous in favor. We have illumination. Next up, another motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve the use of ARPA funds in the amount of sixteen thousand, twenty-nine dollars and fifty cents. For the installation of an irrigation system at the town common as requested by the town common committee. And for expenditure of such sum by the DPW director, first one to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Laura, seconded by Julianne. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor. Laura?
Hi.
Julianne?
Yes, hi.
Lisa?
Hi.
Kristen?
Hi.
I also vote, I vote unanimous in favor and we have irrigation. Um, Amy, thank you very much for bringing these forward to us. I look forward to, I think we all look forward to a successful completion of this project.
Thank you very much.
And thank your committee.
Great. Bye.
Bye. Bye, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a reconsideration of vote. Of the September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three Select Board vote using ARPA funding to establish a Northborough sign and facade program. Um, I'll briefly describe this, that at our meeting of that date, um, the board approved three to two. A um, a program uh presented to us by staff to um, to help fund sign and facade. Uh, improvements um downtown and elsewhere. Um, subsequent, following that, uh, that meeting, I received a request from one of the members of the board. Who voted in favor of that, um, that they had, um, based on some, some additional information that they had gathered. Um, and I think we're probably all aware of at this point, we're um requested that reconsideration be brought forward at a subsequent meeting. Um, so that is this, so procedurally, um, I'll. Ask for a motion for that reconsideration that must be made by one of the members who voted in favor of that at that prior meeting. Um, we would then vote, if the vote is affirmative to reconsider, then that essentially kind of erases the old. Um, the old vote and then there has to be then a new vote on that same item. To um, to determine that and the motion to reconsider, once we discuss that, the person needs to state why they believe. Uh, it should be reconsidered. Um, so with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to reconsider the September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three Select Board vote. Approving the use of ARPA funds in the amount of two hundred fifty thousand dollars to establish a Northborough sign and facade program.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made uh by Julianne, seconded by Kristen, both of whom voted in the affirmative of that original vote. Um. Uh, Julianne is the the maker of the motion. You want to describe to us um, your thoughts as to why we should reconsider?
Sure, so so at the time that this program was presented to us, um. One of the important facts was the committee that would decide on. On the facade improvements and that committee was three people. Um, the planning, our, our planning director, our zoning officer and an architect in town. Can I say his name?
Sure, of course.
Dario Di Mare, who is. Well-known in town. Everyone, I think, agrees that he has exceptional experience and um. I mean, he's an intern- internationally acclaimed architect, so he lent a lot of um talent to this committee. Unfortunately, he, he has since resigned and. Quite honestly, his presence on that committee was um. Was. Pretty much um, the, the primary reason why I voted in favor of the whole program. So I would, I'm asking that the, that the vote be reconsidered. I think, you know, but lo- losing Mr. Di Mare is. Is a very um, a very big factor in this and I think we should discuss again.
Any other members of the board care to speak on reconsideration?
I, I will, since I'm the other. Um. I'm the other one who voted for it and I feel um similarly, I. Believe I um specifically mentioned, I mean, he came, we, we discussed this at two meetings, just a little background. The first meeting he actually attended with Bob Federico, the zoning, the building. Zoning officer slash building inspector, he's both, right? So the three of them were all pitching this idea and I thought it sounded like a great idea and. Sort of the general theme was this is a way to help um. Business owners in town beautify their buildings. Um, which sounded like a great idea to me and that they would have to apply and that it was a three-person committee and then we decided to. Um. Discuss it again at the next meeting, which was only a week away, but within that period of time. Um. Things changed. Dario was no longer a part of. Who no longer wanted to be a part of that committee. He was resigning and um. I, I, I was under, definitely under the impression and I believe I used his name while I was talking about the committee that. Um, I asked, you know, how does it have to be? Um. The, I asked something about the voting. Um, and. It, it just. It wasn't um. I, I felt like I, it wasn't clear to me when I was voting that um. Dario wasn't even gonna be part of it anymore, so. That definitely changed my mind because um. I, you know, like Julianne said, he's, he's brought a lot of gravitas to several committees in town. Not just for working hard and all the other things that all the volunteers do, but he just has a certain level of expertise that is very handy. Because he has a lot of information. At the tip of his tongue that the rest of us would have to look up, so. That plus his general sense of integrity, um, I just. Thought I was voting for that specific architect, not just any architect. It's not that other architects in town. Aren't as good. It's just that now I'm, I don't know who's, who would be the architect, so I feel. Like um, I would like to reconsider also.
Um, I know which way the wind is blowing on this, but I I will state that. Although I'm very disappointed that Dario. Decided not be part of this anymore because I think like all of us, um, I, I really appreciate Dario's work and his skill. And his commitment to the town. Um, I think this is a good proposal. And I think it can work with another architect. Um. So I, I won't be supporting the motion to reconsider. But I respect my board members and certainly do appreciate. That it was a little confusing it being so tied to one particular person when um, that person may have even informed the town, some members. Of staff that they wouldn't be participating even prior to the meeting, um, and that I think generated some, some confusion right after um, our vote. But um, that's where I stand on it. Um, I want to make sure no other members of the board have comments. We have one uh hand up from the audience. Okay, um, Scott Rogers again, uh, first time on this item. Scott, let us know what's on your mind.
Yeah, twenty-six Tomahawk Drive for Scott again. And so did our planning director provide the name of a replacement architect that would form up, be formed on this committee?
I. Don't think. She did. I don't think she did to the board. Um. Does anyone remember getting any, any email or other notification about other names? I know there were some other names. Talked about, but I don't believe the board received. Uh, as a whole, another name. Julian?
So um, I re- I did receive an email.
Scott, I'll get back to you in a second. Uh, sorry, go ahead, continue, Julian.
I did receive an email um. Mentioning one person, but um. That I, that person was not confirmed. That, well, actually it was to to reach out to that person and at that point, um. At, at that point, the um. It, as I said, as I stated, Scott, um. My, my feeling positive about the program was very much dependent on Dario being the architect. And I just, he has, he has experience and knowledge and he's done these kinds of projects that, that um, the. The other person mentioned, I don't think has that breadth of. Of knowledge and background.
Do you think the town staff would be able to? Provide and and bring on board a qualified architect? Do you, do you trust the staff to do that?
Scott, I, I don't want to entertain hypotheticals or or discussions between audience and and board members. If uh, the planning director or anyone else uh through the town administrator wants to bring this proposal or any other proposal back to us, I am uh certain we would entertain it.
Yeah, I guess I'm just, um, I would say that you, you've got what is a good program, an idea. To do what I think you all want to accomplish, which is to improve downtown. And so I, I'm getting an impression that you're, you're throwing out the, the baby with the bathwater a bit in that. You're, you're finding um. An element that um is, is went from a known to an unknown. And looking to cancel the program or not move forward on the program at this time uh due to. A low-risk unknown rather than um, a real, a real showstopper, so. Uh, understand it's, it's your decision to make. Um, I'm hoping that you do find ways to um. Program the ARPA funds, do some downtown revitalization and um, support the programs that staff brings to you.
Thanks, Scott. Julian?
Oh, I'd like to respond to that because as I have stated. I. M- most of my reasoning was based on Dario being on this committee. I think I, I was clear during the discussion that there were many things that I was concerned about, which was a very small committee, three. I think we asked for. A very small committee, three, I think we asked for to um the planning director to consider five. I was concerned about um the lack of any kind of financial assessment. You know, uh doing um. I I was not thrilled about giving money to um. Property owners who who may not, you know, who may not need the funds. And there was no no metric to determine that. And then the, you know, the kind of rotating. It's the rotating acceptance of the applications, I would have preferred that that was, you know, something like CPC does. So this was just, this was just the um the final, the final detail that. Made me. Make this, if this decision did not come easily, I I would love to see a facade program, but not in the iteration. That it is now.
Kristen?
Uh, I would like to just piggyback on Julianne's comment as I am want to do frequently that. One of Lori's comments during our discussion, which was a very healthy um. Standard of discussion, I thought, one of her ideas was if it were to be a five-person committee. Then she would ask for less money um. Because it would take longer to get everything done and she didn't think she would be able to give away that larger amount of money. Over the period of time and that is stuff definitely something I would still consider. Thought that was a good idea.
Alright, um we have another hand up from the audience, Amy Pereski. Now as audience, Amy, identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind.
Actually easier when my face isn't on the screen, cuz I find myself, I look at it and make myself laugh, so it's easier now. But um Amy Pereski, forty-seven Indian Meadow Drive. And um I also just wanted to point out, everybody um or Scott is asking about another architect and. If you read um what you actually voted on. Lori presented that it would be two staff members, her and Bob, and a member of the Design Review Committee. It didn't say an architect, so if you're gonna go forward with the program right now. It would have to be either myself, Lisa Maselli, or Dave Varon because we are the final three in the Design Review Committee, so. If there was someone to be. Added to the sign and facade program to keep it running right now. It would have to be one of those three people because that's what was voted on, it wasn't voted that it was an architect. And um and also, you know, I wasn't gonna go here, but um. The sign of facade program was talked about at the planning board and I'm speaking as myself, not as a planning board member. But um one of the concerns I had was um. When it was discussed, one of the top items that would be awarded the money would be code violations. And if there were all code violations. Then none of the sign and facades would ever get done, so I felt that it was a little misleading to the public. If we were doing a sign and facade program. But possibly you might not even get any signs or facades or anything that would even show. To the residents who um. Would be following along with the program, that was a concern I had, but um. My main one was that you'd have to um actually have. Not an architect because there isn't an architect on our board right now. But, thank you.
Good clarification, thank you, Amy. Before we vote again on the reconsideration, any other members of the board? Have any questions or comments? Okay, so we are voting on the reconsideration, if this vote is approved, then there will be a subsequent vote. Um, all those in favor of reconsideration, Julianne?
I.
Kristen?
I.
Lisa?
I.
Laura?
I.
I vote no, uh uh vote uh four in favor, one opposed, a reconsideration is granted. Next up, we have uh the actual vote again from the same as September eighteenth, so. Again, I see which way the wind is blowing, I know that how this is going to turn out, um votes should be my suggestion in the affirmative. So my suggestion is someone make a motion to approve. And second, and I see which way will probably go four to one against, and that's totally fine, Mike, you concur with that process? You're still muted.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, it could actually be voted either way, some would vote not to approve it. Or I'm moved to not approve it, or you know, have the whole. We are, as as you mentioned, we already know where this is going, so. Even entertain a motion to not approve the the program and that would work also.
Okay, um the way it came from staff was a a move to a to approve, I I that's, I I. I like to do things in the affirmative with a no vote saying no, so by there, but however, anybody wants to make it, particularly Kristen, how would you like to make the motion?
I know, I guess I get to pick, I have the power here, I'll just, I'm just gonna read what I was sent. Because then I can't mess it up, have that. I move the board vote to approve the use of ARPA funds in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to establish. In Northborough Sign and Facade Program and for expenditure of such sum by the planning director pursuant to Mass General Law. Chapter forty-four, section fifty-three A.
Second.
Motion has been made uh and seconded to approve the program uh. Again, we we had a lot of this discussion a moment ago, any other comments or questions? I will probably again differ with the board, um I think this is maybe if even if it isn't a perfect program, I think it's a good program, I'd rather see it. Continue, um a question for the board, again anticipating how this will go, um. Do we want to ask Mike to see if the planning director wants to um to maybe meet with with anybody? To try to work out a recrafting of a sign and facade program to come back for reconsideration?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, okay, so I'm seeing a couple of nods at least, um so Mike, I will let you take that with however you wanna take that. And, um alright, so any other comments or questions before we vote? So I'll say um yes or no, uh Kristen?
No.
Julianne?
No.
Laura?
No.
Lisa?
No.
And I am the sole eye, vote is uh one in favor, four opposed, the motion fails, the assigned facade program has has been eliminated. Um, at least pending any further discussion and subsequent vote at a later meeting, um. Next up on our agenda, we have reports, let's see, Kristen, do you have any reports tonight? You're muted, Kristen.
Uh, there was my one, there was my one, okay, um. So I actually um wanted to remind everyone that. You can still drop off all all your old sneakers to, um there's a few sites. One eighty Rice Ave, one forty-seven Davis Street, or forty-three Ridge Road, um. For the uh, it's a, it's a fundraiser for the scholarship committee, for the scholarship fund um here in Northborough. And they gave a lot of money to a lot of really great kids, so the more money we can raise for this year's seniors, the better. Um, and who doesn't have a couple of pairs of old sneakers that they don't know what to do with? Um, I'm not sure how they make money on old sneakers, but hey, it's a great thing, it's it's keeping sneakers out of landfills also. Um, I also just wanted to say how really exciting it was to meet Governor Healy. And um Lieutenant Governor Driscoll last Tuesday to discuss check tax relief for the seniors at our lovely senior center. Um, it was a real. It was a real thrill to meet Governor Healy cuz I, I'm a little bit of a fangirl of hers from when she was Attorney General in Massachusetts. And she did so many wonderful things and she's really. She's so hardworking and devoted and and then we had such a lovely conversation. With Lieutenant Governor Driscoll afterwards, she's super friendly, nice, and stayed for quite a while and chatted with us about all kinds of things. And met a bunch of people and um it was really lovely and I appreciated everyone who came that day. And Mitch, you looked very nice up on the stage with all the fancy people, um. Um, oh, and uh one of the people that was there that day was Kristen Black and she is, she's our health director. And there was a a couple of flu clinics over the la- flu shot clinics over the last couple days. I did get my flu shot um up at the high school on Saturday morning, but there's one more coming on. Thursday um at the senior center from eight thirty AM to noon, so if you missed the first two. It's super easy, just show up and you get your flu shot and you can go have lunch at the cafe. Um, and that is all I have for my report today. Thank you.
Thanks, Kristen, Julianne, any reports tonight?
Yes, Mister Chairman, so I am the liaison for Planning Board now. And um briefly, they are working on bylaws for town meeting. And continuing to discuss um the best way to move forward with the MBTA housing. Also, um design review is under their purview and. Um, they are looking for an architect to serve on the design review committee, so if anyone is interested. Um, or knows an architect, please let us know. Um, I also attended CMRPC, I attended Historic District and Cultural Council. Cultural Council is accepting grant applications until tomorrow, October seventeenth. And um and it, the agenda has not been confirmed, but MPIC will be meeting soon to go over the. Final plans from Weston and Sampson for the downtown um redesign, so. That ends my report, thank you.
See, Laura, any reports tonight?
I do, Kristen, thanks for mentioning the shoes uh project, um. I had the honor and the fun activity of participating in the scarecrow building contest with my family. Um, the Northborough uh Cultural, I'm sorry, the Northborough Community Affairs Committee. And Northborough Recreation teamed up to put on this fabulous event, if you have an opportunity to stop by. Uh, the 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 Asavet Park on one thirty-five, there's a beautiful display of really creative scarecrows. There was also a pumpkin section to that and I really appreciate all the work from DPW. And all the volunteers that made this possible, it's really quite an awesome sight. In the past, those scarecrows used to be lined up on the fence and now they're like lined up as a team on the field and it just looks beautiful, so I really appreciate. Everyone's effort there, it was all hands on deck, there was also a lot of treats available and all the kids looked very happy. I also wanted to say congratulations to the Northborough High School Association on their one hundred and fiftieth anniversary. This is the oldest organization of this kind in the country and they take that very uh very proudly, I got to attend their reunion back in September. I wanted to thank everybody that contributed to the Northborough Helping Hands Winter Clothing Year. We wrapped that up and a lot of uh clothing was collected, I appreciate all the volunteers that are gonna go through the sorting and the distribution of those. Like Kristen, I was so honored to be able to meet Governor Healy and Lieutenant Governor Kim Driscoll, that was a highlight that I'm gonna remember. For the rest of my days, um it was really special just to have their commitment to continue to collaborate with Northborough, they really appreciate the senior center. And all the awesome programming that they do and I and I hope it's, you know, I hope they'll come back again and visit some of the other areas of Northborough. I also was appointed as the liaison for the assessors committee and I had a really great conversation. With the principal assessor, his name is Lee Kiyomat Nivong, and I'm sorry I didn't pronounce that correctly. He was really proud to share with me that he completed his sales assess, uh sorry, sales analysis. With his staff ahead of deadline and that's really great for the town cuz it saves money without having to use outside consultants. And he takes so much pride in the work that he does for our town, so I really appreciate all the hard work of our staff and. You know, just the the different ways that they're creatively looking to help our town. Uh, last but not least, I wanted to let everybody know that tomorrow is the first official meeting of the Permanent Traffic Safety Committee, so. They'll be electing officers and you'll start getting resources on how you can share. You know, the areas that you'd like to see better traffic safety in the future, if that that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Laura, Lisa, any reports tonight?
Yes, I do, um, uh first I'd like to uh get a note of congratulations to our treasurer collector, Lisa Trost. Uh, for passing the MCTA exam, that's Massachusetts Collectors and Treasurers Association. And that um it's a job well done and I'm sure it took quite a while to get it completed, but. We have a, we have a wonderful um. Wonderful thank you coming to her, um second, there's another note of recognition to Kendra Felteira. For the feature senior center article in the Blue Cross Blue Shield Magazine, the October issue. Um, of Healthy Times, I think that's great to get the um more and more people aware of what we do at the senior center. And um and that's something that should be uh brought up, not just in an email to us, um I also. Was excited to meet uh both the governor and the lieutenant governor. Um, the senior uh tax program is called the Circuit, Senior Circuit. Which is very uh very good because she's doubled the amount of money that is available to uh each senior who applies. It's gone from twelve hundred to twenty-four hundred dollars and um it's uh something that if you've not heard about it. I'm sure you could probably call or even go online and type it in and find some information, but it's a pretty simple. Form that you have to fill out for the state to actually send you a check back. And for all the seniors who are on fixed incomes and are having a difficult time, this would certainly be very helpful to you. Um, I know I've applied for it and I've had it in the last three years, so I can talk from experience and um. I think that uh that the governor is very happy to to go around and tell people about it, I think it was a great uh feat for her to accomplish. And I think we should um we should have, you know, herald that. Um, I'd also like to um talk about the volunteer openings again, that's I guess one of the biggies, we need more volunteers. So today, right now, there are um a seat on Conservation Commission, a few on Cultural Council. Two on Design Review, Financial Planning has two Historic District Library Trustees, Open Space. And ZBA has an alternate position open, so if you're interested. We are sure interested in meeting you, um please uh go onto the website and fill out a form and let us know you're there. And I would also like to thank David DeVries for his years of serving as the town financial. Uh on the town uh town Financial Planning Committee as both member and chairman for quite a long time. I I'm sorry to see him go, but uh we've had members who've been on boards for a very long time and uh it's nice to see an opening that. We can get some younger people in to be able to um also bring their um expertise to this very important committee. Okay, and let's see, one more, oh, two more things, I'd also like to thank Dario Di Mark for all of his services and being. Uh, on so many committees and having so much talent that he shared, um he is a, he is, he's going to be missed. Hope maybe someday we can talk him to coming back, but in the meantime, we we did appreciate everything you've done. And um and a good future for you, um and lastly, um. I'm still looking for some information on an update for the Complete Streets Program. Um, last year, uh there were roads that were set aside that were going to be done with sidewalks. Um, there was talk of having them uh engineered or somebody was going to have to put all that information together. It's um October and I think I'd like to know what's going on with that program and where those sidewalks are at this stage. I do know Maple Street alone was one of the ones that was going to be done between the high school and um Peaslee School. And I think it's a very important uh sidewalk to put in just because of the nature of two schools. And uh it's a dangerous area, um and I I would like to get some more information on that. And that completes my reports for tonight.
Thank you very much, Lisa, um I've got a few things, um I had a meeting with the Community Meals Organization recently. This is the group that puts on um uh provides meals weekly at Trinity Church for members of the public who. Um, want or need uh some additional support with the meals, um over the last, you know, three and a half years because of the pandemic. They've been doing drive-through service basically as a as a takeout, prior to that, they were in person, um really, you know, group meals. And uh they are looking to return to that, um which I think is great, um so uh beginning sometime in November. They are uh gonna be returning to in person, so they are looking for volunteers to uh to help out, particularly. Particularly volunteer groups to come in as a team, to come in and uh, provide the meal and provide the service and provide the cleanup. Um, I was asked to see if the select board might be interested, um, in uh, in sponsoring and attending a meal and doing the work for it. And I said I would ask, some may remember that last year when we provided some ARPA funds to them. To pay for the higher cost of the uh, the to-go meals, that at that point, the select board seemed very interested. In providing that, we've had a little turnover and it's been a year, so I wanted to, to uh, see if the board was interested. Um, and if so, I will uh, coordinate with the good folks at Community Meals to uh, to, to find a date that works for everybody.
Yes.
Yep, okay, good, I'm seeing some nods, very good, um, next up, um. I know, uh, we've had a lot of feedback from members of the public about um, concerns that building permits might be taking a little longer. Than they used to, to get approved and so forth, um, Mike went ahead and worked with the department and um. Uh, discovered that there is a little bit of a backlog, and Mike, I'm sure you could speak to this better than I could, but um. Mike went to the Appropriations Committee last week and got them to transfer some additional funding into that department to increase the staff hours. In there to uh, to hopefully uh, get rid of the backlog, at least, you know, through the end of the calendar year. Um, and uh, and hopefully find a better process to go forward, um, to keep that moving faster. Um, the first fire station, uh, Building Committee Public Input Meeting is tomorrow night. At the library at seven PM, uh, in person, it will be recorded by cable, so for, for members of the board or members of the public. That have interest in seeing where, uh, where the Fire Station Building Committee is with the project, which is at the beginning of the. Full design process, uh, finally, um, please come to that meeting, pay attention, this is the best time to provide input. Because the design will progress, and once the design progresses, it's harder to go back and make changes that were sort of more baseline. Uh, in that, um, there will be at least two more meetings, uh, public input meetings, um, one sometime in November. And one probably in January, um, in advance of the committee's anticipation is to come before. The Select Board in the spring and ask for a slot on the April Town Meeting Warrant for Construction Funding. Uh, and um, I've also invited the, uh, the committee and particularly the architects and the project manager. To come before one of our meetings in our meetings of the Select Board in November, which would provide the Select Board an opportunity to ask some questions. Uh, still early in the process, as well as members of the public who can't attend the in-person public input meetings. But can attend um, a Zoom meeting and ask some questions there. Um, as everyone else has, I want to thank Governor Healy and Lieutenant Governor Driscoll for, uh, for coming to the Northborough Senior Center last week. It was a lot of fun, uh, it was important for them, of course, to talk about the really significant achievement in lowering taxes. For seniors and other groups in need, um, and um, I was appreciative that it came right behind, uh, a couple of meetings ago. We approved increasing the uh, senior work-off limit to the, uh, to the, what was then the legal maximum. And all of a sudden, the legal maximum is a little bit higher, so I hope in the near future, uh, we can reconsider that and uh, and bring it up to match the new, the new maximum. Um. Uh, the community, the Chair of the Community Affairs Committee asked me to um, let folks know that the date for both the community tree lighting. As well as the menorah lighting during the holiday of Hanukkah have been set. The uh, Community Tree and Menorah Lighting Event, the big event, it will be Saturday, December second. And the menorah lighting during Hanukkah will be on Wednesday, December thirteenth, and uh. Suzie from that committee will be before us at some point in the next few meetings to uh, to, to talk about closing the road and the technical things that go along with that. But uh, folks can get those on their calendars, um, those are both uh, really fun events. I want to thank our legislatures for moving our charter amendments along, uh, those may remember that at the April Town Meeting. We asked the legislature for two changes, one is to formally change, uh, Board of Selectmen to Select Board. And the other is to remove the residency requirement that is in our charter for the town administrator, um. Those uh, are moving along, um, just this past week, they um. They were reported favorably by the, I believe, the Committee on Housing Steering and Policy, um. And uh, and they had their, their second readings in this past week, so they're, they're moving in the right direction, um. Let's see, the library is having a, what sounds like a very, very fun event on uh, October twenty-eighth. Uh, from six thirty to nine thirty, a Halloween event, uh, they're actually closing the library for the day for setup for a big haunted house across the entire library. The staff is really doing an incredible job, uh, getting ready for that, uh, the teams, uh, one of whom is my team. Is involved with the planning and will be involved in the decoration of that, um, and they're so excited that they're worried that they may have to do time tickets. To make sure they don't have a thousand people showing up all at six thirty, um, look for information from the library over the next, uh, you know, week or two. On all of the details for that, and lastly, speaking of Halloween, the brand-new Northborough Arts Council. Is doing a contest, uh, for home, uh, trick-or-treat or Halloween decorations outside your house. And uh, as a fundraiser for them, I think it's ten dollars, uh, or more to enter, and then they go around, I'm not exactly sure how they judge. And, and what the contest winner gets other than, uh, than pride in having the fanciest Halloween decorations. But I think it's also a good opportunity to mention that new Northborough Out Arts Council, which is sort of an, an offshoot of the Cultural Council. Um, and some of the things that they can do, that a, a separate five oh one C three, which they are, can see grant funds and can do some things that we can't. Within the town, and that ends my report, and new on our agenda is a specific item for Town Administrator Report. Mike, do you have anything for us tonight?
Mr. Chairman, no, just that I did make a change to your, your agenda and put a section in there for. Your town administrator to be able to report anything out that he feels, and he or she feels important. Uh, to the community, I felt I just break that out so that you have that, uh, available, but I have nothing for you to see.
Okay. I think that's a good idea, thank you, um, Diane, any, any, any reports from the interim Assistant Town Administrator?
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Thank you, um, we've got uh, four cemetery deeds. Uh, would someone like to make a motion on the cemetery deeds?
Mister Chairman, I move the board vote to execute cemetery deeds, one one seven seven. One one seven eight, one one seven nine, and one one eight zero.
Thank you.
A motion made by Julianne, seconded by Kristen to approve the cemetery deeds, uh, any discussion? All those in favor, Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, cemetery deeds, all four of them are approved as presented, um. Next we have, and let's see, is there any other business to come before the board, not previously anticipated? Julianne, yes?
Sorry, um, uh, I was just wondering, uh, if, if we have reached out to Mister Nutting about. Um, or, um, setting a date for when he's going to come and talk to us?
I, I don't know, Mike, if you could reach out, um, to Mister Nutting and see, see when he's available?
I'm just checking through you, I'm, I'm waiting for direction from the board, if you are. Ready to do that, then I will reach out to Mister Nutting and find out what his availability is, but um. I was, I was waiting for the board to make that determination as to whether or not, I still wanted to go forward with that. Based on the fact that you've done your goal-setting agenda, et cetera, I wasn't sure where you were with that process.
So the reason I brought it up is because, um, I did review the meeting, um, because I had that correction in the minutes. And it sounded like we, we wanted to refine our list of goals before we met with him. But now I'm kind of rethinking my opinion on that, and I, I wonder if you could ask Mister Nutting if. If he thinks that's advisable, or if it would be most helpful if he could help us with that. And then do some, you know, some vision statements. Is, is that reasonable to work it that way?
Chairman, through you, I would highly recommend you do it in that. Order, so, um, I will reach out to Mister Nutting and find out what his availability is, and I will get back to the board.
Great, everyone's comfortable with that? Okay, great, thank you, um, thank you, Julianne, for bringing that up, and thank you, Mike, for coordinating that, any other business before us tonight? And the last item, as always, is public comment, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to make a comment before we close out the evening? Going once. Going twice, public comment is closed, and the only other thing for us to do is adjourn, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I can.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Kristen to adjourn, uh, Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote is unanimous in favor, we are adjourned eight fifty-eight PM, thank you very much, everyone, have a wonderful evening.